Time I'd like to call the Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting for July 19th, 2011 to order. Commissioner Williams, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you please rise. Make this an easy one tonight, mighty God. Please give this board and all boards, elected officials everywhere, the wisdom to remember that they're not the masters but the servants of the individual they serve. In your name we pray, amen.
Before we get started here, and just so the audience knows, this is the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, and we will not be deciding anything on the stormwater or has the city tonight involved. So if you're looking for that discussion, it's across the street. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hurrel.
Here.
Commissioner Leczka.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Present.
Commissioner Vidito.
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Way.
Present.
Commissioner Elwell.
Here.
And Chairman Chatwell.
Here.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
No motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion in support. Any items for correction or removal? Seeing none, let's please vote on the amended agenda, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards or recognitions this evening. We do have communication to come before the board. I have a letter dated July 14th, 2011, on the LifeWays Board. I would appreciate the board to place that as item 15D under New Business, please. I will pass it out at that time. That is the first correspondence we have. Is there any other correspondence to come before the board? Seeing none, special orders and public hearings, County of Jackson, Michigan, 2010 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2010, presented by Abraham and McGaffney.
My name is Alan Panter, and I am a partner at Abraham and Gaffney. And, oh, you can see my presentation right there. Let's see if I can get it to full screen. There we go. All right, that'll show up pretty well. The Commissioners, you have the presentation that I'm going to discuss that was sent out in your packets. So the pages that I'm going to discuss will be going by on the screens, you know, so that you can see them and also so that the audience can see as well. So again, I'm Alan Panter. I'm a partner at Abraham and Gaffney, here to present the audit. The materials that you have are the handout, and as I said, everything will be projected on the screen. So this was our second year as auditors for Jackson County, and the audit went very well. I'd like to thank Gerard, Adam, and all their staff for the assistance that we received. We really appreciate that a great deal. Thank you, Gerard especially. So the audit has been filed with the state of Michigan as of June 30th, when it was officially due. It's been filed with the Government Finance Officers Association for their Certificate of Excellence program. So we're here sort of after the fact. So my plan for tonight is to review some highlights of the audited financial statements and just take your questions. So feel free to interrupt me with any questions that you have. I'm trying to not take up too much of your time. The first thing that I'd like to discuss is the independent auditor's report. The purpose of an audit is to give you an opinion on your financial statements, not to detect fraud and not to give assurance on internal control. So those are two very important concepts, or that is a very important concept about what it is that we do. So an audit is all about giving you an opinion on your financial statements. One of the things that we consider is fraud, but we're not giving any assurance on that. We're not saying that the financial statements in your organization are free of fraud. We're not saying that. What we are saying is we're giving you an opinion on your financial statements, and that's what you see here. What we're giving is called an unqualified or a clean opinion. That's the best you can get, and that means a couple of things. It means, first of all, the statements are formatted correctly in accordance with all the various GASB requirements, GFOA requirements, GAAP, basically General Exceptive Accounting Principles, and based on the procedures that we perform, the numbers are good. It's significant to point out that while we're giving an opinion on the county's financial statements as a whole, we did not audit. Other auditors audited the road commission, the economic development, and the medical care facility. Those numbers are included here based on the reports of other auditors. So then you can see that in the opinion here. So clean opinion, unqualified opinion, that's the takeaway from this. The next thing I'd just like to point out is in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, this document here, in case you have it, I'm not sure Gerard, I don't think you, we didn't give you a lot of hard copies, so it's electronic mostly. This is called Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is written by management, not audited, so this is not our document, it's the county's document. It's a plain English discussion of the financial statements. Just like to encourage you to read it if you get a chance. It is in the financial statements, right behind the independent auditor's report. Excuse me. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the governmental funds balance sheet. This is what we call a snapshot, a picture as of a point in time, as of December 31st, 2010. This shows what we refer to as the major funds of the county. You can see it has the general fund, the jail, millage, the medical care facility maintenance effort, building authority bonds, and then all the other non-major funds all added together. There's a calculation that we run through to determine what are major and what are not, but these happen to be the same as last year. There was no change from the prior year in terms of what's being shown. I'd just like to focus on the general fund as the primary operating fund of the county. In the left-hand column there, towards the bottom, the third and the fourth numbers up from the bottom, the total of those, just over $13 million, is the unreserved fund balance. That's the amount that's available for future expenditures and is needed to provide adequate cash flow and reserves. We measure the adequacy of fund balance as a percentage of annual expenditures. So the county is sitting at about 31% of annual expenditures in that fund balance number. We usually recommend a minimum of 15 to 20 percent, so the county's a little bit above that recommended minimum, and that's probably a good thing. As you know, the county is facing some significant revenue challenges, shrinking property tax base, revenue sharing uncertainty at the state level, and also interest rates are historically low levels. So the money that was made on the county's investments and the money that do have is really at a historically low level right now. So that's probably a good idea to have that level of fund balance. The next thing I have for you is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. Same column format here, same funds. Again, I just want to focus on the general fund. This statement shows how fund balance changed during the year. So you can see down towards the bottom, third number up from the bottom, net change in fund balance. The general fund added $548,000 in fund balance this year. Revenues and expenditures were within about 2% of the prior year numbers. The next thing I have for you is a topic that I was asked to talk about, and this is the childcare fund. In the right-hand column there, this is from page 72 of the audited financial statements. In the right-hand column there, you see the childcare fund. Down towards the bottom, you can see almost $2.2 million in fund balance. This fund is concerned with the county's obligation to provide care for courtplace children. The funds of that, the funds that are there are derived from, there is state money that flows into there, a fairly significant amount, but the vast majority, the money that goes in there, is transferred from the general fund. So it's a significant source of expenditures of the county. It's a significant obligation, statutory obligation, that the county has is to fund those courtplace children. So that $2.1 million represents about 48% of annual expenditures. So you hearken back to, you know, what we talked about with the general fund. General fund's at 30%, this fund's at 48. So I think the reason that this is important is you can see the $2.1 million, the number right above that, $520,000, that's the amount that's being budgeted to be spent out of this year, over and above the revenues that are coming in. And I'm told that about $1 million is budgeted to be spent out of that fund in the coming year, in 2012. So I just wanted to point that out and make sure that you see where that childcare fund is and get a little bit of information about it. The next page is again the childcare fund, and this deals with just the revenues and expenditures, and it also shows the budget. So you can see the revenues intergovernmental, that $1.7 million, that's the piece that comes from the state. As you read down that actual column, you can see total expenditures there, almost $4 million. So it's about, you know, that's what gets spent in that fund on an annual basis. And the other thing you see here is transfers in, $3.4 million, that comes from the general fund. So there's a combination of funding here, but really that amount is available for appropriation by the county. I have a couple graphs, and then I'm all done. Going back to the general fund, excuse me. This is a five-year comparison of revenues, expenditures, and resulting fund balance. Just gives you a little historical perspective on where the general fund is. You can see that each year, the general fund has added a little bit to its fund balance. You could also see that there's, the revenues and also the expenditures are trending down from the high point of 2007. So you can see that the activity is decreasing in those funds, even though the fund balance has increased somewhat. Next one is a breakdown of general fund revenues. Just shows you a real high-level view of where the money comes from in the general fund. Of course, taxes, 51%. You can see here that transfers in, 13%, and intergovernmental, 18%. There's been a little bit of a shift there. As you know, a few years back, there was a shift in the property tax revenue from a winter levy to a summer levy, and as that happened, as the tax levy shifted from winter to summer, there were assets accumulated in what the state called a revenue-sharing reserve fund. That money was used for a few years to replace the state's obligation to pay the county state shared revenue. That money was exhausted last year. The state has resumed its payments. So there's been somewhat of a shift. The transfers in were higher last year, about 18%, and the intergovernmental was lower. So there's been a little bit of a, so instead of transferring money that you had on hand, you're now receiving it from the state. The last one I have for you, everybody's always glad when the auditor gets their last This is the breakdown of expenditures. All the percentages here are really close. There's only one that's even changed by 1%. But you can see, you know, where the money goes in the general fund. General government, 43%. That's basically the Board of Commissioners, administration, courts, treasurer, clerk, and all those sorts of core services that the county provides. Public safety, 35%. That's the share from the jail. Other down there, 15%, that's retiree benefits, insurance, and its appropriations to various other funds and organizations that the county supports out of general fund dollars. The 7% there is medical examiner, public health, mental health, services to aging. So that's how that breaks down. We did have a couple of minor findings. They're in the back of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I wasn't planning on going into those. I would characterize them as minor, and they've been discussed with management, Adam and Gerard. So, do you have any questions? If not, I thank you for your time. I'm all done.
I have a motion to receive from Commissioner Mahoney. I have support from Commissioner Leczka. Any comments at all? I'd like to congratulate staff on a well-done and good job. Upon review of the summary of prior year audit's findings concluded, everything appears to be resolved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Thank you. Thank you very much. We've arrived at the first round of public comment. Please step forward. Identify yourself with your first and last name and what township you reside in. Remember that you have five minutes at this time and three minutes at the end of the meeting. Would anyone like to speak under public comment?
My name is Stephen McColsky. I reside in Sandstone Township, and I am also an attorney here in Jackson, Michigan, with the firm of J. Jeffrey Anderson and Associates. And I've been asked by Klein Brothers to come here and speak along with 80 other businesses, and I appreciate that this body isn't going to be making a decision on the stormwater fee, but I'd still like to address and ask for some support from the board, if I may. Again, I'm an attorney, but I'm not asked by Klein Brothers or the other local businesses here who I represent here tonight to come and talk to you as an attorney. I could come and tell you that the city of Lansing passed a very similar ordinance to what the city of Jackson passed, and that the Michigan Supreme Court found it to be unconstitutional. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here because I am a business attorney, and I try to keep my pulse on the business climate and economy in Jackson County. And there's very little doubt in the local businesses' minds that this ordinance will have a substantial negative effect on them, and it also will have an effect on the encouragement of new growth and relocating of businesses to Jackson County. And for that reason, I'm here just to ask that in any way possible, I understand that you're not going to be making a decision on the ordinance, that the city is going to be doing that, but I ask that you support your local businesses, and I want to also thank you on their behalf for the work and efforts that you have made to make Jackson County a business-friendly environment and climate.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Special meetings of standing committees. At this time, we need to have a meeting of County Policies Committee. They'll meet right in back of Mr. Elwell, and we'll return to the meeting upon their Everything complete? Will reconvene the Board of Commissioners? We're now at the consent agenda. I have a motion by Commissioner Mahoney, support by Commissioner Hurrel. Any items for removal from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, I'd like to remove item number C4 and C5 from the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Elwell.
I think we, unless I missed it, blew by minutes, did we approve the?
We did blow by minutes.
Duly noted. I will go back. I turned my page, and I apologize. We have items C4 and C5 under consent agenda. Any other items for removal or discussion? Place items that were removed, put them under 13C, has one and two?
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe I would like to request to remove from the consent agenda D6.
Those have already been postponed. Earlier in the meeting when we did the agenda, Commissioner Vidito removed those items, postponed decision on them.
Thank you.
Anything else under consent agenda? Seeing none, let's use our lights to vote for the consent agenda, please. Inanimate ballot was cast, and the consent agenda has amended. Now, let's go back to item 11, minutes from the 6:21 regular meeting of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners. We have a motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now at standing committees. County policy is first. Chairman, Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move policy number 4160.
We have a motion in support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
Next move, policy number 3010. Vacant positions.
We have a motion in support. Any Commissioner comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move policy number 3015, 3015.
We have motion in support. Commissioner Mahoney.
I went to the policy committee that was held over here and stated my opposition, or it's not really an opposition, but a displeasure with the removal of some of the language regarding diversity in the community and how we care about it and our stance about it. I think that we have had several surveys and studies conducted and brought back to this community stating, you know, with the communities concerned about how we cannot attract our young people back to Jackson after they completed their degrees. And part of that reason was because of the lack of cultural and diversity. And it was said in the policy committee meeting that it stated other places in the county and didn't feel like in policy was the best place. Well, we follow policy, and I don't know where else it stated. Nobody could tell me. I understand that our interim administrator recommended that the changes not be made, and they were made anyway. So I'm just stating my opposition to those changes.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take a minute to read the policy, what it says, if I may. It's pretty short, and this is what remains of the policy. It is the policy, I'm sorry?
We have it in front of us.
I understand.
Commissioner Mahoney, could you please let Commissioner Elwell speak? He has the floor.
Right. I'd like to read it for the benefit of the audience. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. "It is the policy of Jackson County to employ a workforce that reflects the diversity of the citizens we serve. We recognize the benefits of diversity and its contribution to the workplace as we carry out our mission." Now, my opinion is that what remained of that policy, that part strongly states our support of having a diverse workforce. We continue to carry that philosophy in other parts of the county in the hiring process, and part of what we crossed out was language that talks about the tenants of County Quality One, which we don't even have anymore. So I think it's appropriate what we've done. It does still strongly support diversity of the county, and I'm okay with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other Commissioner comments? Let's use our lights to vote on this one, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to.
Commissioner Mahoney.
I think that since we've read the part that David wanted to read, I'm going to get to the part that he left out and read it into the record as well. I can get to it.
"We further recognize that the differences added richness and talent to our employee teams and make us more creative and successful in serving our customers," is the line, two lines that were deleted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any other Commissioner comments? Duly noted. Passed 11-1. Commissioner Elwell.
It's all to the representative chair.
County Affairs and Agencies chaired by Commissioner David Leczka.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we have appointments to the Land Bank Authority, one public member. The term expires October 20, or October 2015, and we have Jeff Cruz as the recommendation of the committee.
We have a motion in support. Any nominations from the floor? Commissioner Elwell, then Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Lower Schluckey.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hurrel.
Jeff Cruz.
Commissioner Leczka. Commissioner Rice.
Jeff Cruz.
Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Alexander. Commissioner Vidito.
Jeff Cruz.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Cruz.
Commissioner Williams.
Schluckey.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Way. Commissioner Elwell.
No.
Jeff Cruz has been appointed. Commissioner Leczka. No other items. Human Services Committee chaired by Commissioner John Williams. Commissioner Williams.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I asked that the two resolutions be moved from the consent agenda, which you kindly did, and I'd like to read those into the record since it's the county that's honoring these two individuals. The first of the resolutions was a resolution honoring Rose Morrison. Whereas Rose Morrison has contributed her leadership skills to the community over the past years by being a very caring individual, has volunteered with various community programs to improve the lives and citizens of Jackson County. And whereas Rose Morrison has provided ongoing leadership in hospice bereavement programs, including Camp Weaver Hope and annual family funds to help people be able to afford eyeglasses. And whereas Bob Eby has advocated for community involvement, listened to people, shared life experiences and selflessly shared compassion. And whereas Bob Eby has been selected as the recipient of the Jackson County Senior Citizen of the Year Award for 2011, to be recognized for his outstanding record of volunteer service in the Jackson community. And whereas this volunteer award, sponsored by the Michigan Department of Community Health Office of Service at the Aging, Mission Commission and Services to the Aging, the Jackson County Fair and the Jackson County Board of Commissioners and the Jackson County Department of Aging recognizes this outstanding volunteer in the community, now therefore, we are recognizing Bob Eby as one of the important volunteers who contributes their talents to government groups and individuals. The Jackson County Board of Commissioners, the Jackson County Fair and the Jackson County Department of Aging extend their appreciation and recognition to Bob Eby for his unselfish service to the people of Jackson County.
We have a resolution and support. Any Commissioner comments? If it's a resolution, we'll use our lights to vote, please. Unanimous ballot was cast. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second resolution is honoring Bob Eby. Bob Eby has contributed to the community by volunteering his time and conversation with a parent to provide support to many in Jackson County. Whereas Bob Eby has selflessly used his time as a hospice volunteer, greeting people at hospice home, providing comfort to family and patients and offering assurance, assuring presence. And whereas Bob Eby has volunteered his church and volunteered with his church and Lions Club, including promoting awareness of the needs of people who are blind and raising funds to help people be able to afford eyeglasses. And whereas Bob Eby has advocated for community involvement, listened to people, shared life experiences and selflessly shared compassion. And whereas Bob Eby has been selected as the recipient of the Jackson County Senior Citizen of the Year Award for 2011, to be recognized for his outstanding record of volunteer service in the Jackson community. And whereas this volunteer award, sponsored by the Michigan Department of Community Health Office of Service at the Aging, Mission Commission and Services to the Aging, the Jackson County Fair and the Jackson County Board of Commissioners and the Jackson County Department of Aging recognizes this outstanding volunteer in the community, now therefore, we are recognizing Bob Eby as one of the important volunteers who contributes their talents to government groups and individuals. The Jackson County Board of Commissioners, the Jackson County Fair and the Jackson County Department of Aging extend their appreciation and recognition to Bob Eby for his unselfish service to the people of Jackson County.
We have a resolution and support. Use our lights to vote, please. Unanimous ballot was cast. Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the business of the Human Services Committee.
Personnel and Finance chaired by Jim Vidito, Commissioner Vidito?
No items come before this board this evening, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vidito. We are now at item 14, unfinished business. The board postponed this decision until tonight. Resolution 07-11.24, to amend the compensation plan for the county of Jackson to add 1% cost of living adjustment to countywide elected officials in fiscal year 2012.
Don't move.
Have a motion and support. Any Commissioner comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mahoney?
I would just like to say that I would say that hard work on our, I'd like to, um, um, yeah, I would just like...
Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. Jackson County's six elected officials have played a major part in the county's financial success over the years. They lead their departments by setting a fine example by being fiscally conservative, creating an environment which allows for county employees being a valued team members, as well as by providing quality services to Jackson County residents. It is my opinion that these elected officials currently receive a fair total package when considering the employment environment in Jackson County and the southern Michigan regional area. While touring these departments over the last six months and speaking with these county officials personally, I have seen dedication, the amount of time, energy and passion that is put forth. With all of this said, my decision on this vote will be based on economic conditions that many of us are currently facing. I will be voting no on the salary increase. As a small business owner, my husband and I have not been able to offer wage increases to our employees for some period of time due to the wage increase in health insurance costs. The additional expense for our employee benefit packages are considered their raise as their premiums increase. As a public school educator, teachers are now sharing in the cost of healthcare premiums that were formerly covered by school districts. These are shared sacrifices that many of us are asked to make to get our local state and counting back on its feet. In conclusion, I believe I should spend the county's money or not spend, as if it were my family's budget, on our family farm or a struggling local school district.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to say I have been on those visits with Commissioner Alexander, and I do concur, our elected officials are passionate and certainly excellent at what they're doing. I'd like to make just a short comment here. As elected officials, we represent the public. We provide services for the public. We listen to the public and work to address their best interest. We should also recognize as elected officials that even a 1% cost of living adjustment is not necessary in these difficult times. I'll be voting no.
Commissioner Way?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I want to say I'm voting yes on this, and my reasons is we have a strong team in place. We have a strong strategic plan in place that we've been going for a number of years. These people have been the leaders for us out in the trenches. We've eliminated more than 84 jobs in the last five years. They've helped us get where we're at right now. We heard our audit tonight, we have 32% fund balance. These people and our Redler employees have gone about raises for two years. I believe they need it. I haven't necessarily agreed with some of the decisions some of them have made in the last couple of months, but, you know, as I tell my kids, two wrongs don't make a right. But I will be supporting them because I think we have a great team in place and they should be compensated. Thank you.
Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any prepared statement, but I'll be voting no on it. I appreciate the great job the line employees do, the elected officials and department heads, but I just don't think now is the right time for it. And I think really the reward for the great job that they do as team players is getting reelected and serving the people. And I just think it's not the time for it nor the place for it, and I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Commissioner Leczka?
Philosophically, I'm against cost of living raises because they are inflationary. I'm against giving pay without additional work being done. But in this case, these people have done additional work over the years, and so I think they deserve this.
Mr. Duckham?
I will be voting no on this resolution. I believe that this compensation package was well-known when the elected official decided to run for election, won their election. I could see a review of the compensation package upon the elections, as the election cycles evolve. I think the proper time to review compensation is upon the next election cycle. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Smith?
I just have one comment. I've been on here seven years, and I don't think we've ever had a raise in that time, have we? Have we? Oh, okay. 1%, not very much.
Any other Commissioner comments?
1% and yet they keep running for office.
Commissioner Williams, would you like to speak?
I would, I thought you...
Thank you.
It recognized me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that it's not so much that I don't disagree that our elected officials do a fine job, I do agree, but as leaders in the community, I think they recognize the financial situation we're in, and I think that would be to their, you know, to give them the opportunity to ask the questions as to whether or not they even run a race or believe that they are deserving of the raise. We're all at the same position, making leadership decisions regarding the budget and whether they believe that 1% or $5,000 might be better spent someplace else in the community. And I think that that'd be an option that we should at least extend to the elected officials before making that decision for them. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Use our lights to vote, please. We have five yeses and seven noes, the resolution is defeated. We now have arrived at new business. This time, we're making note of changing the dates of the August standing committee meeting and the Board of Commissioners meeting to follow the Jackson County Fair and be one week later than posted on the original calendar at the beginning of the year. Have a motion?
Support.
And support? Any Commissioner comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Resolution 07-11.19, opt-out tax exempt resolution, Blackman Charter Township, proposed amendment to the tax increment financing and development plan for the local development finance authority.
Yes, I can. The board some time ago passed a policy with respect to the appointment of the Road Commission. It basically said if they wish to use a more extensive search process for the Road Commission, then the board would make that, be given that opportunity. So, the reason this is on the agenda, because you have somebody leaving the Road Commission, a staying appointment, and it's up to you to determine whether you want to use the normal policy or the normal committee process or a more extensive search process.
I guess what I'm looking for is a suspension, a motion to suspend the policy, and then we have a motion from Commissioner Mahoney and support from Commissioner Leczka. Any Commissioner discussion? I'm going to explain here that the administration intends to bring forward the list of candidates who were involved in the process seven months ago, and that will be who the board, who the County Affairs and Agencies will be picking from. Commissioner Elwell?
Just as a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, then you will not be taking any new applications from the public in general?
We have, I believe Dave are required to take them, so I guess we will also. But we have resumes and everything, I guess, we have that group also, but yes. All in favor of suspending?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Item 15D. I received a letter from Lifeways, and the gist of the explanation is that Mid-South is attempting to align itself with Clinton, Eaton and Ingham Counties, and we would just like to express our concern and to show our support for our local Lifeways and that they be represented at the table on these negotiations, and that it be reminded of to Mid-South that Jackson and Hillsdale residents should be making their own decisions on where their money should be spent. This letter was brought forward, I'm asked to sign it, I bring it forward just so you're aware of it. If there's any consternation, I'd like to have that discussion now. Normally, we would do this at the steady session, but they would like to get this to Mid-South as soon as possible, and they have a board meeting tomorrow night. Commissioner Earl?
We need a motion to have our chairman sign this, and I would like to make that motion.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion from Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Duly opposed? Motion carried unanimously. I thank you, my fellow Commissioners. At this time, we return to the second round of public comment.
I'm Marcy Wondell with the Department on Aging, and the awards for the Volunteers of the Year will be presented at the County Fair on Monday, the 8th, at 11 o'clock. So, if you can be there, that would be great. Thanks.
Any other public comment? At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a written opinion from the Jackson County's attorney.
Don't move.
We have a motion and support. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners of Jackson County back to order, please, entertain a motion to come back into session.
Don't move.
Motion from Commissioner Mahoney, support from Commissioner Duckham. At this time, Commissioner Elwell, you have a motion to read, sir?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to direct our administration to work in conjunction with our legal counsel to oppose the city's stormwater fee, which we believe is an illegal tax that should be placed on the ballot for a vote of the people.
Clarification, that's under Headley, correct? An illegal tax under the Headley Amendment?
Correct.
Have a motion from Commissioner Elwell and support from Commissioner Leczka. Please use your lights to vote. Let the record show, that's a 12-0 unanimous ballot for the motion. At this time, I'd like to entertain Commissioner comments.
Thank you for recognizing, Mr. Chairman. For today's meeting, I want to apologize for speaking without being recognized, I'm sorry about that. And then also to the motion that we just passed unanimously, I think it's key, it was key for me in that vote, that the city does have recourse, and that recourse is to put it before the citizens. Regardless if they believe it to be a tax or not to be a tax, they can still put it before the citizens, and then the issue becomes moot. And I think that that's the right way that they should handle this issue. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, we are...